Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. In compliance with NJSA 10:4, the Open Public Meetings Act, and in accord with DCA guidelines related to the functioning of virtual meetings, this regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Township Planning Board has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
Thank you.
For Monday, March 22, 2021, the Jackson Township Planning Board meeting, Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Riker?
Here.
Mr. Jeswicki?
Here.
We have a motion for the payment of Bachelor Recording Secretary for this evening, March 22, 2021, please. And I need another motion for the payment of Bachelor Recording for the Planning Board Secretary for this evening, March 22, 2021, please. Legal matters, we don't have any resolutions that are ready for this evening. Changes to the agenda, Denise, do you have anything for us? Thank you. And so we're going to jump right in for matters of discussion. We have Block 18401, Lot 4, Ocean County Vocational Tech School Courtesy Review. Mr. Cle, you want to get that off, please?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. This is a courtesy review, and we didn't prepare a formal engineering report. It's for the Ocean County Votech, Votech Technical School at the, on, I'm sorry, Tom Drever Road. Basically, it's building additions to the, to the, to the project. I had hoped there would have been a representative from Votech here, but that's pretty much the extent of the application.
For the record, Mr. Shea, who just, Robert Shea, who just raised his right hand, is the attorney, I believe, for Votech. And do we have an engineer?
We have Mr. Phil Rayner from Yezzi Associates. I also have Ed Crawford, who's our facilities manager, and also Karen Homiak, who's our superintendent of schools, which I don't intend very frankly to call any of them up if the board has any questions. Phil can give kind of an overview of the project as well as I.
We'll get right back to our planning. A planner needs to weigh in on this application before we open it up for you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. We don't do reviews for courtesy reviews either. So this is located in the RD9 Rural Development Zone in the Pine Lands. So as Mr. Shea goes through his witnesses' testimony, we'll have some comments. Remind the board that courtesy review, at the end, we do reviews and recommendations with regards to the application. Thank you.
Okay. Now, Mr. Shea, you may begin. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, Robert Shea appearing on behalf of the Ocean County Vocational Technical School. This facility, as indicated by Mr. Cle, is located at 850 Tom Drever Road. It's a facility that has been servicing Ocean County students and its residents for probably four or five decades. This is one of the first major renovations to the facility in quite a number of years. It's as a result of seeking certain funding from both state and federal that this is coming, coming about. Again, part of the process is to go through a course of review with the local planning board. This will also have to go through the muster of Pine Lands as well, which we're in the process of submitting to them. So the, the project and a proposal is to add about 20,000 square feet to the existing building of about 48,000 square feet. It's quite amazing what goes on out there. Just to give you a little idea as to the type of curriculum that the, that the students are exposed to, it's, they have electrical plumbing auto, but they also have Insha woodworking, custom woodworking, and design medical assistance programs are out there as well. Welding, diesel collision repair, mechanical engineering technology, heavy, heavy equipment operator operating, which is being done in partnership with several other companies in the Ocean County area. Automotive technology and pre-engineering auto servicing and technology. So there's quite a bit happening, and it's really the reality is the need for the space to service some additional students out there as well. The, the parking, it's just at the borders where the parking is really not changing significantly. The building is going to be located on the west side of the, of the property, and Mr. Rayner will explain that. Again, subject to Pine Lands review, which we have a re-intention of submitting, which we have submitted already, just very frankly, and waiting for their response. And at this point in time, perhaps I have Mr. Rayner weigh in. He can show the board the proposal and, and any questions the board has relative to the project and also the curriculum. I have again Ms. Homiak here as well, who will be more than happy to indicate to the board any concerns or questions they have regarding the curriculum. And we can find Mr. Rayner?
Yep. Wasn't aware of that. Sorry. Mr. Rayner, if you could unmute yourself and turn your camera on, please?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. I can't see you.
Okay. How about now?
There we go. Thank you. Do you need to qualify him?
Yep. Mr. Rayner, if you'd raise your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board shall represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Can you, first of all, if you could kindly speak up or closer to the mic, but if you'd kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your affiliation, and then the chairman will ask you a couple of questions to qualify you.
Okay. Name is Philip, P-H-I-L-I-P. Last name is Rena, R-E-I-N-A. I'm a licensed architect on staff with Yezzi Associates.
Thank you. You're licensed in New Jersey?
That's correct.
How long have you been practicing?
I've been licensed in New Jersey since 2001. My base state of licensure was in New York in 1993.
Okay. We accept your qualifications. You're going to have to try to clean up your audio, though. We're having a little feedback or something. Thank you.
Phil, if you'd just give the board just a general overview, and maybe you could share the screen with them as far as what the proposal is for the addition to the schools I indicated.
Sure. Do I have permission to share? Okay. I'm going to take you
Let me ease to the flag of United States of America. It's a republic of which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, may I have the open public meetings?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. In compliance with NJSA 10:4, the Open Public Meetings Act, and in accord with DCA guidelines related to the functioning of virtual meetings, this regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Township Planning Board has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
Thank you. Four calls.
For Monday, March 22, 2021, the Jackson Township Planning Board meeting, Mr. Dolan, Dr. Campbell, Mr. Riker, Mr. Jezwicki,
Here.
Mr. Luisey, Ms. Britto,
Here.
Wall,
Here.
Humming, Mr. Riccardi, Mr. Haring, Mr. Hudak.
Here. We have a motion for the payment of voucher recording secretary for this evening, March 22, 2021, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I need another motion for the payment of voucher recording for the Planning Board Secretary for this evening, March 22, 2021, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Legal matters, we don't have any resolutions that are ready for this evening. Changes to the agenda, Denise, do you have anything for us?
Nothing at the minute, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And so we're going to jump right in for matters of discussion. We have Block 18401, Lot 4, Ocean County Vocational Tech School Courtesy Review. Mr. Cle, you want to hit that off, please?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. This is a courtesy review, and we did not prepare a formal engineering report. It's for the Ocean County Votech, Votech, Votech School at the, on, I'm sorry, Tom Diver Road. Basically, it's building additions to the, to the, to the project. I had hoped there would have been a representative from Votech here, but that's pretty much the set of the application.
I'm here.
For the record, Mr. Shea, just, Robert Shea, who just raised his right hand, is the attorney, I believe, for Votech. And do we have an engineer?
We have Mr. Phil Rayner from Yezzi Associates. I also have Ed Crawford, who's our facilities manager, and also Karen Homiak, who's our superintendent of schools, which I don't intend, very frankly, to call any of them up if the board has any questions. Phil can give kind of an overview of the project as well as I. And
We'll get right back to our planning, planner needs to weigh in on this application before we
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. We don't do reviews for courtesy reviews either, so this is located in the RD9 Rural Development Zone in the Pine Lands. So as Mr. Shea goes through his witnesses' testimony, we'll have some comments. Remind the board that courtesy review, at the end, we do reviews and recommendations with regards to the application. Thank you.
Okay, now, Mr. Shea, you may begin. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, Robert Shea appearing on behalf of the Ocean County Vocational Technical School. This facility, as indicated by Mr. Cle, is located at 850 Tom Diver Road. It's a facility that has been servicing Ocean County students and its residents for probably four or five decades. This is one of the first major renovations to the facility in quite a number of years. It's as a result of seeking certain funding from both state and federal that this is coming, coming about. Again, part of the process is to go through a courtesy review with the local planning board. This will also have to go through the muster of Pine Lands as well, which we're in a process of submitting to them. So the, the project and a proposal is to add about 20,000 square feet to the existing building of about 48,000 square feet. It's quite amazing what goes on out there. Just to give you a little idea as to the type of curriculum that the, that the students are exposed to. It's, they have electrical plumbing auto, but they also have insular woodworking, custom woodworking, and design, medical assistance programs are out there as well, welding, diesel collision repair, mechanical engineering technology, heavy, heavy equipment operator, operating, which is being done in partnership with several other companies in the Ocean County area. Automotive technology and pre-engineering auto servicing and technology. So there's quite a bit happening, and it's really the reality is the need for the space to service some additional students out there as well. The, the parking, it's just at the board's, where the parking is really not changing significantly. The building is going to be located on the west side of the, of the property, and Mr. Rayner will explain that. Again, subject to Pine Lands review, which we have a re-intention of submitting, which we have submitted already, just very frankly, and waiting for their response. And at this point in time, perhaps I have Mr. Rayner weigh in, he can show the board the proposal and, and any questions the board has relative to the project and also the curriculum. I have, again, Ms. Homiak here as well, who will be more than happy to indicate to the board any concerns or questions they have regarding the curriculum. And we can find Mr. Rayner.
Yep. Wasn't aware of that. Sorry. Mr. Rayner, if you could unmute yourself and turn your camera on, please.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, I can't see you.
Okay, how about now?
There we go, thank you. Do you need to qualify him? Mr. Rayner, if you'd raise your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board shall represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Can you, first of all, if you could kindly speak up or closer to the mic, but if you'd kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your affiliation, and then the chairman will ask you a couple of questions to qualify you.
Okay, my name is Philip, P-H-I-L-I-P, last name is Reina, R-E-I-N-A. I'm a licensed architect on staff with Yezzi Associates.
Thank you. You're licensed in New Jersey?
That's correct.
How long have you been practicing?
I've been licensed in New Jersey since 2001. My base state of licensure was in New York in 1993.
Okay, we accept your qualifications. You're going to have to try to clean up your audio, though. We're having a little feedback or something. Thank you.
Phil, if you'd just give the board just a general overview, and maybe you could share the screen with them as far as what the proposal is for the addition to the schools I indicated.
Sure. Do I have permission to share? Okay, I'm going to take you to, and start with an overview of the site, if I may. Can you see the screen? And can you see the area of the, of the site?
Yes.
So the aerial that you're seeing, aerial view, obviously, of vocational school. The proposal is to construct an addition on the west side, which would be this area right here. I'm going to flip to that screen right now. And that would be here. And as you can see, let's try and center this. The link to the, to the existing building is on the west side. Well, I'm calling the west side, but north is kind of on an angle, but there's a connection corridor from the existing building that leads in the westerly direction, and it wraps and turns the corner, runs along the length of the building. And in that addition, it's a single-story addition with a mezzanine area, but there's basically four shops that are there. And they're housing plumbing, electrical, and there's, there's medical as well. And there are four individual units, and those units are mere images of themselves, but they have four individual curriculums. And there's a mezzanine area for storage above the classroom area. So each of the units has a, has a dedicated classroom space and then has a workshop space.
Phil, if you could share the architecturals at this point, that would be helpful.
Mr. Shea, one second. So let's just mark that Google Earth image as A1 for identification. And Mr. Rayner, can you just tell us what's the date of that, or how did you pull that?
I can do that. The date of that, I'm having a hard time with. So I have
It appears, Mr. Rayner, our technical person, Mr. Jacobs, indicates that the Google Earth is 5/20/2019. Does that comport with your recollection or refresh your memory?
Yes.
All right. Now, I will also say again, you're going, you continue to go in and out, so I know some of the board members and myself, we are having difficulty hearing you.
Okay, if I make it louder, is this, this improved, does it make it work?
That's, that's better. Just talk into the microphone as clearly as you can, Phil.
Okay. And then, Bob, I'm willing to flip to the architectural. So this is a general overview of the site. We, we superimposed the floor plan onto an aerial view in this view. But the architecturals, and I'll get past the, the cover page. So this, this floor plan demonstrates just the new addition. This is the connection corridor along the side.
That's, that's not coming up. We're still on Google.
It's very difficult, Mr. Shea. We, we apologize. Do you have any? Do you have headphones, perhaps, Mr. Rayner, that you could, you know, with a better mic?
I do not. I'm going to try and get closer to the camera. Can you, can you see the screen of the, of the floor plans?
No, we can't. It's only, it's stuck on the Google show.
Yeah, that's acceptable if we, he mutes himself and then
There we go.
Calls in.
Okay, why don't you run through those plans, Phil?
Okay. Lower area here, this floor plan is the, is the ground level floor plan, showing the connection corridor, the corridor that leads you into the four individual units.
I'm, I'm sorry. Can you hang on one, one second?
Sure.
Yeah, Mr. Rayner and Mr. Shea, we're, we're not hearing Mr. Rayner's testimony. It's very garbled and it's just not coming across. I have a question for you, Mr. Shea. Was this application, was this noticed to the residents, any residents within 200 feet?
Yes, it was, yep.
Okay, thank you. Will I go on speaker, then? What we're trying to do, Mr. Shea, is maybe we'll, if, if Mr. Rayner can mute himself, we'll call. If you can give us your number, or, Mr. Shea, you have my email address, right?
You know, you know what? If, if the board would like to take, although I've, I've testified at a few hearings before, Mr. Gurn, I probably can run, run the board through these, these particular plans as well. If that's, if you're hearing me, hearing me, fine. The, the plans that are before the board are the plans that we've submitted to the planning, the planning board and its staff. Essentially, what you're seeing here, it's a new addition to the west side of the building. You'll see at the bottom of the, of the architecturals, a hallway that leads from the existing building into this new area. New area is about 19,700 square feet and change. And essentially, it's to add additional classrooms for the automotive medical assistance, as well as some, some additional teaching staff areas as well. So it's really just to add further space for the workshops that take place over there on a regular basis and to add an opportunity for, to supply more classrooms for the students. Phil, you have another, another page you can show? Okay, and it, and you'll see here, this is the proposed facade of the, of the new building. You'll see a garage, several garage doors are located in the, in the front facade of the building. That's where the automotive repair technology is taking place. Some exciting programs are happening over there, in that, I think I mentioned before, that there is a heavy equipment operating class that is really state-of-the-art. It's being done in conjunction with a, a local business that does a tremendous amount of work on the Parkway Authority and throughout the country. And they're actually going to be engaging in, in teaching our kids the, the ability of operating heavy equipment in, through, through virtual training, which is kind of exciting. So this is, one of the buildings is going to house that. You'll see the three garages there, that's, that access, that allows for access to the auto repair, auto technology area, where they're going to have diesel repair, diesel and collision repair as well. And, and again, just a, a new facade, similar to, the facade is out there, we're going to be cleaning up that facade as well. But the, these are the, about the only changes overall to the, to the site. We do have a, a site plan that was generated by O'Donnell and Stanton as well. Phil, could you bring that up? Okay. Little, little bit, maybe, maybe you could just enlarge that a bit. You'll see on the, the, this shows the existing building, one-story building that's out there presently. To the rear of the site, there's some additional parking that is actually used to, for auto body and service. That's to the west of the site, you'll see a, kind of a hedge line in the, in the west, towards the west property line. That is basically where the new structure is going to be located. To the east of the existing building, there are, there's really not going to be any changes to the existing parking. There's about 103 to 104 parking spaces presently on the site. That will remain. I think there's probably a net loss of two parking spaces on the site. And we have about 300, 300-plus students, but they're in split, split classes at this point in time during the course of the day. Most of the transportation of the students takes place by way of school buses going into the site. And there are about 14 to 15 teachers on the site on a daily basis. I spoke with Ms. Homiak, there's absolutely no parking issues out there whatsoever. Most of the students do take, take buses in. They, they operate at their, at the school from half the day, and then they're sent back to the sending districts after their respective classes. So there's been not an issue at all with respect to the parking, we don't anticipate it. Phil, if you could bring up the new, new structure, there you go. And this is the location of the new structure, as I said, to the west footprint of the building that we just went through. And you'll see some additional paving that's being generated for a courtyard area for the students, so they can go outside every so often. There's a realignment of some of the parking directly in front of the building. And you'll see the retention basins that are against, that will be part of this, the overall project. We'll be more than happy to share any of this information with your engineers, so they can take a, a look at that as well. But again, all of the, all of these plans are going to have to pass the muster of Pine Lands, which are, which is always interesting. And that basically is a presentation, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have, again, I have Ms. Homiak here, who can answer any, any questions relating to the operation of, of the facility, but it's fairly straightforward.
Okay, anyone have any questions regarding this application? No? I just have one. Parking, are they in compliance with how many spaces are needed versus square footage and so forth? Has anyone done that, that calculation?
We, we are. There's, the park, the park, as I understand, in, in Jackson is three spaces, or, I'm sorry, for every three students is one space. The way in which, it depends on who's there and who's not. We have three, approximately 300-plus students at the facility overall every, every day, but only 180 students approximately on each shift. So, you know, there, there's sufficient parking at, at the site. And, and that has never been an issue whatsoever. You know, we could, could we add some additional spaces? We probably could, but that would also add to impurposed coverage, which we'd rather not do and be, and create more of a headache for us with Pine Lands.
Understood, okay. Anybody else?
I have a quick question. This is Andy. Just from a safety standpoint, looking at, at the drawings, that there's a lot of different shops involved in all this, and you're going to have the appropriate sprinkler systems installed in case something goes wrong in one of those school, school classes?
It's, Phil, Phil probably could answer, but I, we, we have to comport with, well, certainly regulations as far as from the Department of Education, which is sometimes even more stringent than the, the international building codes involved. So, or, or the building is entirely sprinkled, as I understand it, Phil can check, as I said. If he, if he wants to make that representation, it would have to go through, just because the board does a courtesy review, we have to go through the muster of getting building permits and the like from your, from your building department and, and have to make sure we comply with all building requirements, including fire subcode requirements.
Thank you.
Mr. Riccardi? No, you good? That was your question. Okay, he stole your thunder. Anybody else? No? Mr. Shea, do you have anything else to add?
Nothing further.
Anyone care to make a motion? Do we have? Oh, okay, we need to open this up for public comment, I'm sorry. Is there anyone from the public who cares to speak regarding this application? Do we have any hands raised? Okay. Okay? We no longer have her, okay. Did she put her hand down, or did she just? Okay, last call. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? She's back. Okay, put her on.
Can you unshare your file? The
Hey, Phil, take your screen down.
Ms. Garner, I see you've joined our meeting. If you could unmute your microphone and turn your camera on, we can proceed. Whoops.
Okay. Chair, Ms. Garner, thank you for raising your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm the testimony, information, questions, or comments about the, before the board represent truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your address, please?
Okay, Denise Garner, G-A-R-N-E-R, 8 Dover Court, Bear, Delaware. I just, you know, I have to apologize now. What, what is exactly is, is the, the use of this property? What, what are you proposing? I mean, I was trying to listen to the entire testimony, and I did, you know, look at your, your plans, which is a conceptual design, but I'm trying to, you know, what exactly is this? Is this, will this be a business?
No, no, if, if I could, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Garner, this is a, this property is owned by the Ocean County Vocational School System.
Okay.
And the, it's been there for, as I said, as I indicated initially, close to 40 years, I believe, maybe longer than that. There have, there have been minor renovations over the course of the year. Need for growing technology for students in Ocean County. You know, the Board of Education for the vocational schools is really dedicated to enhance the, the experience for students dealing with plumbing, electrical, automotive repair, automotive technology, cosmetology, all, all the things we hear about on a, a daily basis of jobs that are really, are, are jobs out there that need filling, very frankly. And our, our students, I'm proud to say, I've been representing the Votech Board for quite a number of years. And the student ratio of, of people leaving, leaving the schools, getting jobs in, in businesses is just outstanding. So this is one of, one of six centers that we have. We have centers dealing with performing, performing arts, which is a brand-new facility, magnificent facility in Ocean County College. We have a mates program in Stafford Township. We have programs in Tom Diver, War Town, and the like. So this is just one of our facilities. This is a, again, a county facility, not a business, and it's
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Shea. I am familiar with, you know, driving past there when I was working at Lakers Naval Base. And, um, you know, in thinking about, you know, what your proposal is, it's expanding the, the campus for them?
Yes, it's adding about 20,000 square feet of classroom space.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. I just didn't hear like that whole thing. And then when I seen the, the AutoCAD concept of the, of the, of the, you know, what your proposal was, I was a little off. But this is a great project. It's great for the, the young, the younger generation. And, you know, these skills are definitely needed for the future. Thank you very much for your explanation. I appreciate that. And that's my only comment on board. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak on this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else that has their hand up? No one else? Okay, can I get a motion to close public comment, please? All in favor? Aye. Moving along, there's no other questions? Moving along, there's no other questions? Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Just Wiki?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Fleming? Mr. Ricardi? Mr. Herring? Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much, have a great night.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, next application we have is Block 4201 Lot 3 Cedar Swamp Plaza LLC. This is initial testimony. Mr. Clea?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This application relates to a prior approval, Resolution Memorial, is the 17th of June 1919. I believe there was some litigation.
2019, nobody's that old. You said 1919.
2019, I apologize. And there was some litigation relating to a testimony regarding, I think, an expert in traffic. So, I think the application is more or less centered or focused on that additional traffic testimony, but I'll leave it to the, the applicant, the applicant's attorney to, to bring us up to speed. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the board, Timothy Middleton, on behalf of the applicant.
And if you could hold off for a minute, please, we're still in the middle of our professionals' testimony. Mr. Peters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The application is a conforming use in the zone, and as Mr. Clea had indicated, as part of the initial litigation, the applicant would, had agreed to come back here and provide new traffic testimony as it related to the original application. That's all.
That's it. Okay, Mr. Middleton, you're on.
Yeah, I apologize, I didn't realize I'd cut in on one of the professionals, but the recitation was correct. The, the board approved the application in June of 2019. Two of the neighbors, Michael Brashir and Stephen Brodsky filed a lawsuit appealing the approval. They were represented by Ed Liston. The matter was heard before Judge Troncone on a pre-trial hearing, and during the hearing, the objectors' counsel indicated that their main concern was with regard to the testimony of Scott Cannell, who is a traffic expert, although according to Mr. Liston, should be also an engineer. In lieu of litigating that issue, we all agreed to remand the matter back to this board that have a traffic expert, albeit a licensed engineer, in this case, John Ray, who is Mr. Cannell's partner, provide the testimony. I should note that in the interim, Mr. Brashir and Mr. Brodsky have dropped the lawsuit. I, I believe they were concerned with the buffer on their side of the property, which was proposed to be 25 feet, but has been increased to 35 feet. So, at this point, I have, and I believe Mr. Ray is present at the meeting to, to allow him to provide the, the traffic engine, engineering testimony. Once again, Mr. Erickson is also at the meeting. He's, he was the civil engineer who designed the project and testified originally. I'd like to put him on for 30 seconds to a minute, just to explain the buffer realignment. And with that, I, with the board's permission, I'd like to have Mr. Ray sworn in.
Mr. Erickson first, Mr. Middleton.
Okay.
Mr. Erickson, you raised your right hand. You solemnly swear firm the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your affiliation, please? And then the chairman will qualify you.
David Erickson, E A R E C K S O N. I'm a vice president with Matrix New World Engineering. I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from NJIT. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I've testified numerous planning boards, including this one.
We accept your...
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before Ms. Erickson starts, I just want to articulate for the, for the record, I think it's important, Mr. Middleton, that based on this remand, and this matter was carried to this day to allow board members who had not participated to review the transcripts, they have done so, and certainly members who did participate had the opportunity to review the transcripts to refresh their recollection. I can state for the record that all board members are eligible to vote.
Thank you.
But, Mr. Middleton, I just have a question for you. If the lawsuit was dropped, wouldn't that end all of the legal wrangling?
I believe it would. The, the problem I have is, is a court order indicating that it was remanded, and, and the board should entertain the same with, with regard to the new testimony. The, the lawsuit was, this, was technically dismissed well after that order was filed. So, I thought in, in, in the better practice would, would be to proceed tonight, follow. I'll defer to your counsel, if he has, he has another opinion.
No, I, I, I agree, Mr. Middleton, I think it's better practice. The, the order of remand stands affirmed, and the, the court didn't retain jurisdiction, so...
Correct.
Understood, okay. Moreover, I think it's important not to belabor it, but that there've been changes in the plans, and, and that's really why Mr. Erickson is here, and then that testimony can be supplemented by Mr. Ray. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Erickson.
We were preparing to go through resolution compliance when the lawsuit was filed, and in the last resolution, the waiver that we had requested for the buffer had been denied. So, we have modified the site plan. The building on the north side of the site has been reduced in width. The other three series of buildings, which is four buildings in total, have all been shifted north, so that we now have the required 35-foot buffer along the southern end. The building's square footage has been reduced to 86,991 square feet in total. So, the, the only change to the site plan is the one building got smaller, and all the buildings shifted north to allow for a buffer on the south side that meets the ordinance requirements.
That was the primary, that was the, the major change, correct, Dave?
That is correct.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Through the chair, Mr. Ray, you've raised your right hand. You solemnly swear firm the information, that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, your affiliation, and you've appeared on numerous occasions here, but brief qualifications, just for the record.
Sure. John Ray, R E A, a principal with McDonough and Ray Associates, traffic engineers, Manasquon, New Jersey. I'm a licensed professional engineer, 45 years' experience in the traffic engineering field, and I've testified as an expert before this board many times in the past.
We accept your credentials, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ray, you're familiar with the project, correct?
Excuse me?
You're familiar with the project?
Yes.
And you, and you prepared a traffic report with regard to the same?
Yes, we did.
And you, you've come to some conclusions regarding the issues raised in that report?
Sure.
And can you explain those to the board, please?
Okay, well, first of all, as Mr. Erickson has explained, the project has been downsized a little bit, in particular to increase the buffer on the one side of the project. We originally had about 90,000 square feet of space proposed, we're now down to a little bit over 86,000 square feet. So, there has been a slight decrease in the square footage that's proposed. Our firm has probably had an opportunity to do 25 or 30 traffic studies over the years for these self-storage facilities. I think most of the board members are probably familiar with the use. They are very low traffic generators, probably among the lowest traffic generators of any commercial uses, because once a tenant has moved the, the equipment or the furnishings, whatever they have into the storage unit, they typically don't come back every day to visit the storage unit. So, sometimes they don't come back for weeks, months, until they need to get something out of the storage unit, and as a result, they're very low traffic generators. A, a project of this size will generate approximately 10 to 15 peak hour traffic movements during the traditional morning and afternoon peak hours on Cedar Swamp Road, which is Ocean County Route 527. The project will not have a significant impact on the operation of Cedar Swamp Road, which generally sees about 700 to 1,000 traffic movements in two directions during peak hours. Again, this is going to be a minimal traffic generator with a minimal impact. With respect to the site plan, the internal roadways between the buildings are dimensioned at 24 feet. This is a typical dimension that these facilities operate with, because the speeds and the volumes within the project are generally very low at all times. So, when a tenant comes to the storage unit that they need to get to, they just park their vehicle outside the storage unit, and if anybody needs to get by, there's still plenty of room. You can't get two cars passed, you know, simultaneously, but given the low speeds and the low volumes, and the low amount of activity at these facilities, it's never an issue, even with a 24-foot dimension between the buildings. The four parking spaces up front will be adequate to serve the facility, again, because the tenants that go to the storage facilities will come into the facility and park next to their unit. They won't use one of the four parking spaces up by the front, by the office. Typically, those spaces are only used when people come in and they sign up for a unit, or when they're signing out for a unit, if they have some kind of business in the office. Those are the only times that those parking spaces are occupied or used, so they will be adequate for that activity. Site distance, you know, the Cedar Swamp Road is level and straight in the area, we will have to get a county approval, because it is a county road, but at the end of the day, it's a permitted use, it's a very low traffic generator, and it will have a minimal impact on Cedar Swamp Road. And that basically summarizes it.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Ray? Middleton, do you have any further?
I have no further questions, Chairman.
Any further testimony from anyone? No? Okay, is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on this application? Okay. Anybody? I need to close public comment. All in favor? Aye. Any other comments, questions, anyone care to make a motion? As amended. I have a roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan? Dr. Campbell? Mr. Riker?
Yes.
My fault, that was a yes.
Wallace, yes.
Mr. Fleming? Mr. Ricardi?
Charles Wiki's yes, as well.
Yes. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, congratulations. Take a short break before we go into the continuing saga of Jackson Park. Block 10401, 17802, lots 5.04 and 57.01, Jackson Park South section. Briefly, Mr. Clea?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a continuation from actually last week. I believe the applicant finished his testimony, and we closed the, the public portion, so I imagine now it's time for a summation by the applicant. I have a few comments I'd like to add, but I don't know if we want to hear from the, the applicant initially, or really what the board's pleasure is.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may jump in right there, I think what, and certainly Mr. Peters also can weigh in, but the recommendation and how we left it at the last meeting is that Mr. Gazarovski and then Mr. Tuval would provide summations. Thereafter, the three of us, led by our board professionals, would talk about questions or comments, and then the board would deliberate. Yes, that's correct, that's where we are. So, Mr. Peters, anything to add?
Mr. Chairman, the site's still located in the MF AH8 mixed residential affordable housing eight zone, and is still a permitted use in the zone. Thank you.
It hasn't moved. Thank you.
Ain't moved in a week.
Good to know it hasn't moved. Okay. So, Mr. Gertner, who goes first, Mr. Gazarovski or Mr. Tuval? Mr. Gazarovski goes first. Mr. Gazarovski, you're on. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Can everybody hear me? I'm sorry?
Yes. Can you hear us?
Am I, yeah, am I being, am I heard?
Yes.
Okay, fine. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, council, of course, has called for closing statements by the attorneys for parties. I, of course, represent an individual with regard to this, and I, I will keep my comments brief, because I believe with the volume of testimony, both with regard to Section 1, which is north, as well as this, the board has been very patient and very attentive to the comments of all parties. I'd like to start by just first referring to a letter which is dated August the 10th of 2020 from Remington Vernix Engineers, and on the first page of that, they basically summarize why we're here. The author of that document points out that the site is located on two tracts, which consists of 359.71 acres. The south site, which is why we are here this evening, is located on the northern side of West Betterman's Highway between Cassville, Prosper Town Road, and Harvard West Drive, while the north is located on the southwestern side of Purventown Road, between Beatrice Lane and Oakley, the portion of the north side of Purventown Road, between Perrinville Road and Cassville Road. Now, I, I was not present during the hearing for the north section, however, I did in fact file a complaint seeking to intervene in that case. That matter was heard by Judge Troncone, and while I was not permitted to intervene in the underlying case, which was decided by the board, I was permitted to, if in fact an appeals to be taken as to the north, to participate in that. My understanding that the Jack, Jackson North has not yet been resolved, because there are a number of motions which have not yet been decided by Judge Troncone. The important part of the letter dated August 10 states very clearly that the applicant has been granted a general development plan approved by the adoption of Resolution 2019-88 at the April 1st, 2019 planning board meeting. And that very clearly says that the general development plan approval consists of development of the north and south parcels to develop the site in question. And my first comment would be, is that while we're here speaking this evening about Jackson South, this in reality is a part of the general development plan consisting of both the north and the south, and they are intertwined, and I would submit to the board that the various considerations with regard to traffic, engineering, and the like are applicable to both north and south, and must be considered in conjunction. The important part of the letter also points out on page six, and, which is really going to be the heart of my comments this evening, saying that a minimum parking setback from back of curb, and then above that, minimum parking setback from road or drive aisle, 25 feet... At the last hearing, if the board recalls, much of that meeting was taken up by the examination of Mr. Vertarisi, who was the traffic consultant for the applicant. He also referred to, and I think a part of his testimony included, earlier testimony by Mr. Rathencamp. Now, when we look at the application, I want to draw the board's attention to the issue of shared parking. And there was great discussion with regard to parking being perpendicular. With regard to the ordinances of the Township of Jackson, there is a 50-foot right-of-way which is required. Now, I understand that all of the property, which is the subject matter of the site at present, is owned by the applicant. However, comma, any approvals will also be dealing with the question with the traveled way as well as the right-of-way. And in Mr. Vertarisi's testimony, what he clearly pointed out, that there will be maintained a 30-foot right-of-way. However, with regard to parking, comma, a great majority of the parking will in fact be perpendicular parking, meaning that as one is driving down the traveled way, there would be a 90-degree angle to pull into the parking spaces which are provided. It should also be noted that there was comment at the last hearing about an earlier application, which I think was dealing with something on Cook Bridge, pointing out the problems with parking, parking being done off-site and/or the like. I think we should focus on the fact that with regard to this roadway, the traveled way will be 30 feet. However, there will in fact be no shoulder. The 10 feet on either side of the traveled way will be occupied by parking. And with regard to that parking, 10 feet, I believe, of it will be within the right-of-way, which ultimately will be owned by the Township of Jackson. The remaining eight feet will be on the applicant's property. One of the issues I raised at the last hearing was that this board did not have jurisdiction to hear this because the Township of Jackson has not in fact been made a part of this application, although this board will be deciding an issue that will be dealing with that perpendicular parking and basically the elimination of the 50-foot wide right-of-way because it will be utilized for the private parking of the applicant. Now, the examination of Mr. Vertarisi was really quite extensive, and he described how there could be parking on a roadway. For example, with a 30-foot right-of-way, there could in fact be parallel parking on that traveled way. Mr. Vertarisi pointed out that this was not a practical matter in this particular matter. Similarly, comma, there could be angled parking. Once again, Mr. Vertarisi dismissed that. What he is proposing and did propose is that we would have this parking at basically a right angle with the majority of the parking space being used for the private parking of the applicant. Now, what I think we have to consider is that when called upon to describe instances in which he was familiar with this 90-degree parking off of the traveled way, I would submit respectfully to Mr. Vertarisi that he was rather vague. The most important thing I think that this board must consider is that it is virtually impossible to have safe perpendicular parking off of the traveled way. And the most common place where we see perpendicular parking off of a traveled way is in a parking field or a shopping center or even a parking field wholly contained within the applicant's property. Here, comma, in order to accomplish what they're seeking, cars who were parked would have to back out directly into the traveled way. And that then gets us to the issue of safe travel through the traveled way and what the speed limit would be to ensure safety of ingressing and egressing. Well, certainly in a parking lot or a parking field on-site, if one were to go to a, for example, a supermarket or a shopping center, you do in fact have perpendicular parking. But it is not within the right-of-way of a public street. When you're speaking in terms of safety, well, the parking speed within a parking lot, albeit on either a shopping center or the like, is certainly not 30 miles an hour or 20 miles an hour or whatever else it may be. One would only be able to safely park in those spaces in such a lot would be if basically the cars driving through this parking lot would probably be going no greater than 10 miles an hour. So how can you have a project of this size where probably the safe traveled way on the traveled way would be something in the area of 10 or 15 miles an hour? How is that a public street? It simply is not. Now, also, Mr. Vertarisi, I think Mr. Rathencamp also went through what was the required amount of parking for this project, and I have that figure here, which I'll give you in a second. I believe the required amount of parking is somewhere around 1,325 cars, and there's provision for over 1,600 cars. So I think something which must come to mind is why is it necessary to have that greater amount of parking? And that greater amount of parking can only be achieved if you permit the applicant to utilize what should be a part of the right-of-way for their parking spaces. You know, attorneys always like to refer to historic facts or cases which they've handled in the past, but if in fact you have a public right-of-way, which should be under your ordinance 50 feet, which is 30 feet of a traveled way and 10 feet on either side, how can you approve a project which takes that away from the site, takes away that use by the public and limits it solely to those individuals who reside within this project? Why is it necessary when you could seemingly satisfy the parking requirements under your zone by not having those additional 300 spaces, which you're achieving by perpendicular parking? Why is that necessary? And how does that impact how these units are going to be utilized? Will they be utilized solely by one family or will they be utilized in some instances for a unit more than one family? What is the need for that additional parking? If you eliminate that additional parking, you probably could have roadways and parking which are fully compliant with your zone. Now, in order for them to achieve what they're seeking to do, it's been clearly spelled out by your professional, Mr. Peters, that they need a variance. It's clearly spelled out on page six of his report where he says minimum parking setback from road or drive aisle is 25 feet. Here, he points out that for this south project, they are parking within the right-of-way, and that requires a variance. You then go on to his last paragraph where he says, back in April of 2020, applicant has provided no justification for the variance request. There has been no justification put forth by this applicant as to why the applicant, as a private developer, must utilize what should be the right-of-way of the municipality itself. And in every case, there's always an issue, which I think is paramount. In this particular case, I think there are two paramount issues. One, as Mr. Peters points out in the very beginning, that the applicant is operating under the application that he filed as a general development plan. That general development plan encompasses both Jackson North as well as Jackson South. One of the key elements of the project would be the connector road and when it will be constructed. When one reads the transcripts from both of these, and I think the board must consider the transcript from both Jackson North and Jackson South, one of the great complaints of those members of the public who testified would be the impact that this would have upon the road system of Jackson as far as trucks bringing in thousands of loads of fill, which would basically impact the surrounding area of this project. You have decided upfront, and the applicant did in fact apply for a general development plan, and I would submit to this board respectfully that you must not only consider what you have before you on this one second track, Jackson South, but also how it fits in in conjunction with the melding together of Jackson North as well. This is one overall project. There is absolutely no need for the applicant not to have to complete this connector road, which will alleviate heavy traffic surrounding this area for miles. In addition to that, based upon your parking standards, there is no reason why the applicant would have to increase his parking by close to 20%. There's just not. And it's fine if that additional 20% were placed upon the property owned by the applicant, but that's not the case here. In order to achieve this vastly increased percentile of parking, the applicant is seeking to have the governing body, the municipality, assist him in his development by utilizing what should in fact be a right-of-way owned by the municipality. Now, I've listened to, and I thought was particularly telling, was the testimony of a representative from one of the environmental groups. Now, basically, I mean, they have no dog in this fight. They don't live in the area. They haven't hired an attorney. They're pointing out to you what would be significant environmental impacts as a result of this. One of these environmental impacts I would submit to you is driven by this parking plan. You're going to be adding significant amounts of impervious surface where there is parking in the right-of-way. It's really as simple as that. So what I think this board must look at is, number one, what was the intent of the ordinance passed by the governing body wherein the general development plan was created? That, I think, is the key question which the board must ask itself. This is not a standalone, not a standalone application for something called Jackson South. This is part of a general development plan, which includes hundreds of other units. And it's this overall plan which you must consider in conjunction with this in making your decision as to this particular track known as Jackson South. I think that the comments, and I've read the comments of the various representatives, meaning representative, various property owners who live in that area, they have clearly expressed their views. They have expressed their views with regard to the connector road. They have expressed their views with regard to the amount of traffic and the impact of the impervious surface, and those are my comments. And I would urge this board in considering this to, number one, not permit this perpendicular parking, taking property away of the use of the public. You know, we have to recognize that the municipal government is only a part of the equation. It's the duty of the municipal government as well as this board to ensure that the rights of the public are protected. And I would submit to you respectfully, they are not protected if in fact this board were to allow this perpendicular parking, which affects everything. It affects the environment. It affects the impervious surface. It affects the wetlands runoff and all of those things such as that. When you take all of those spaces, rather than there simply being perhaps grass or gravel, whatever it may be, it's going to be mecanic. This has to have an impact on the overall use of this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Tuval?
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jason Tuval, attorney for the applicant. Mr. Gazarovski, good evening. How are you? First, I want to thank the board for listening to this application over the last five months. As the board is aware, this is an application for preliminary and final major site plan, preliminary and final major subdivision approval, and conditional use approval. The residential development that is proposed is precisely contemplated by the MF AH zone, a zone that was specifically created for this project. I'm not going to go through the affordable housing history in detail, but the board is aware that this property is part of Affordable Housing Plan, Affordable Housing Agreements, and other court orders. The application proposes 549 units with related site improvements comprised of single-family homes, townhomes, stacked townhomes, multifamily buildings, and of course, is part of an inclusionary project. The project meets the requirements of the site plan and subdivision ordinances. The application meets the conditions of the conditional use standards for the utilities that are part of this project, and the project meets or does better than what your zoning ordinance requires for, I'll call the higher-tier bulk standards. So for example, the application complies with parking by far. The application complies with setbacks. The application complies with all the landscaping requirements. The application complies with coverages and height and density, et cetera. So this is a variance-free application, as we've put forth through our witnesses and as your board professionals have also indicated. We had four witnesses testify over five months of meetings. We had our civil engineer testify, traffic engineer testify, Lenores, representative testify, as well as our professional planner. What's interesting about this application is that this was filed way back in 2019. So over the course of that time, we've had the ability to revise the plans on occasion to comply with your board professional comments that have been set forth in their letters. So I believe we've addressed nearly all the comments set forth in both Mr. Peters and Mr. Cle's letters since they started issuing them for the south application. However, to the extent there's anything outstanding, we would stipulate that we agree to comply with those comments. We also had the ability, over the course of five months, to listen to comments that the board had with respect to the application. So I'm going to go through some of the changes and revisions that were made in response to board comments during the course of the application. So first and foremost, we talked about Prosper Town Road, and we've agreed to place the path within the Prosper Town Road right-of-way and add signage along the right-of-way as discussed at the hearings. We've agreed to replace the street trees with low shrubs along the boulevard in the single-family home section to address conflicts between trucks and the tree overhangs. That was something raised by Councilman Fleming back several months ago. We've had the ability to replace the landscaped roundabout with mountable curb and paver surface to accommodate emergency vehicles. That was also discussed during the course of the proceedings. We've added additional recreation. That was something that the board brought up, as well as something that the special court master brought up. We looked at that. We added a tot lot near the multifamily. We've added a beach volleyball court near the clubhouse, and we've also added benches adjacent to the wooded areas and retention ponds. So first and foremost, we talked about Prosper Town Road. And we've agreed to place the path within the Prosper Town Road right of way and add signage along the right of way as discussed at the hearings. We've agreed to replace the street trees with low shrubs along the boulevard in the single-family home section to address conflicts between trucks and the tree overhangs. That was something raised by Councilman Fleming back several months ago. We've had the ability to replace the landscaped roundabout with mountable curb and paver surface to accommodate emergency vehicles. That was also discussed during the course of the proceedings. We've added additional recreation. That was something that the board brought up, as well as something that the special court master brought up. We looked at that. We added a tot lot near the multifamily. We've added a beach volleyball court near the clubhouse. And we've also added benches adjacent to the wooded areas and retention ponds. Another aspect of the application that we changed as a result of the board's comments is we've added street trees along West Veterans Highway. And I'll say the area that we spent the most time discussing between the applicant and the board were the width of the driveways for the townhomes. The applicant, in a conforming manner, proposed fifteen-foot driveways, compliant with the ordinance. However, there was some concern from the board regarding the width. And based on some comments, we agreed to increase the driveway width in the townhomes to seventeen feet. Want to talk a little bit about some of the items that the objectors raised, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this. First and foremost, with respect to coupon, there was a lot of reluctance on behalf of coupon to disclose the names of members, donors, and even the addresses of the board members. And it took a while to even get what the names of the board members were. It took months. Coupon also never provided, nor did anybody else from the public, any expert testimony, any documents, any exhibits to contradict any testimony that the applicant's experts or fact witnesses provided. An issue that came up during the objectors' testimony and members of the public was the environment. And Mr. Gazarovski talks about some of the groups or members of groups that came out. In fact, this applicant was proactive with respect to the environment and has left no stone unturned. The applicant spent close to two years before even filing an application, obtaining several prominent permits. The flood hazard area verification that established the riparian zone. A freshwater wetlands letter of interpretation for buffers. A freshwater wetlands transition area waiver. So unlike a typical application where an applicant may wait to get outside agency approval until after getting approved by a local municipality. An applicant spent two years obtaining all the requisite environmental permitting before coming to the board so they knew where the established buffers were and where the established environmentally sensitive areas were. I'll also note that in conjunction with West Veterans Highway, the applicant received a pineland certificate of filing. So this should dispel any notion that the applicant didn't do all of its due diligence with respect to the environmental constraints. And it's also worth noting that in the years vetting of the NJDEP permitting process, the NJDEP considers historic preservation, streams, wetlands, threatened and endangered species, and obviously stormwater management in connection with its review of all these permits. And although these permits are not part of the planning board's jurisdiction, I felt it was important to dispel some of the statements made by the public because the applicant was extremely vigilant in its environmental permitting here. And I think that's also shown by the fact that in connection with your own environmental commission, the Jackson Township Environmental Commission, as discussed in the court master's memo of three sixteen twenty-one, the applicant did appear before the Jackson Township Environmental Commission on December fifteenth of last year. And the commission did vote to approve a recommendation of no concern to the planning board, obviously subject to all DEP requirements and outside agency approvals. But that goes to show the due diligence, the vigilance, and the hard work that the applicant went through to ensure that all the environmental permitting and development of this site was done responsibly. I want to talk about the right of way issue that was raised during the course of the hearings. The applicant provided expert civil engineering, traffic engineering, a Lenore representative, and a professional planner that provided testimony on the right of way issue, that it functioned safely and efficiently. The applicant agreed to certain maintenance obligations with respect to the area that's in question. The board professionals had no issue with the design as proposed. And of course, like I indicated before, there's no expert testimony controverting anything that the applicant's witnesses stated. So Mr. Vertarisi, Ms. Galvin, Mr. Rayn Camp all testified that the right of way, the parking is all done pursuant to industry standards and is done properly. Now, I want to just respond to a few of the things that Mr. Gazarovski said. I'm not going to take too much time on this. But a lot of them Mr. Gazarovski stated is unfounded. First of all, perpendicular provided is parking is permitted under RSIS. And the reason that Mr. Peters' letter dated August tenth, two thousand and twenty, talks about not providing justifications was because we hadn't started the, we hadn't started testimony yet. After we provided testimony, because we remember, we started public hearings on this case in November of two thousand and twenty, not in August of two thousand and twenty or before that. So once the applicant provided testimony, and I think that's what a board planner should do. They identify certain issues in their letter and they wait for the applicant to provide testimony. And if you read the transcripts, the board professionals actually indicate that the applicant provided all the justifications, if even a variance is required. We don't even believe it is. But if it was, the board professionals responded that the applicant's design was appropriate and that the applicant provided the requisite testimony in the event that the board felt that a relief was required. So I just, I thought that that was a little conflating where you talk about a letter from August when the public hearings didn't even start until November. I also want to talk about, I want to object to anything regarding the north application. This board should be looking at the south application as it has all along as an application for the five hundred and forty-nine units that we're seeking here for preliminary and final major site plan approval, preliminary and final major subdivision approval and conditional use approval for this development on its own. So I object to anything Mr. Gazarovski stated with respect to the north. So to sum up, the application complies with all zoning requirements and conditional use standards set forth in the Jackson Township Code. The applicant's met its burden of proof for under the site plan and subdivision ordinance for preliminary and final major site plan and subdivision approval. And that's really the board's task here, and that's what's really important. Does the applicant meet these standards? And they do, as indicated by both the applicant's professionals and the boards. This application is consistent with the goals and purpose of the MF AH eight zone that was created for this type of development. The applicant has revised its plans to adhere to certain board comments. The applicant, like I indicated before, performed all its due diligence by getting the requisite DEP permits prior to even coming to the board. And those DEP permits, just by the way, are part of this planning board record, were submitted with the application and were reviewed by the board and by the board and its professionals. The environmental commission voted of recommendation of no concern. And we appeared before the environmental commission and provided a presentation there. No expert testimony has been provided that refutes anything that the applicant has testified to. As I indicated earlier, we agreed to comply with anything outstanding in both Mr. Cle and Mr. Peters' letters. I believe we've addressed nearly all of them. But again, to the extent that anything is outstanding, we'd be happy to do that. And with that, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I would respectfully request that the board grant the application as proposed. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have during its deliberations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, my respectful recommendation, I know there may be some questions, but I think even prior to the board beginning to ask questions or deliberate, you should probably hear from our board professionals and then allow the board to deliberate, ask whatever questions based on the totality of the record.
Okay, gentlemen, Mr. Cle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As indicated, we've started this November sixteenth, and there's been quite a few hearings that we all sat through. The application, except for the one issue regarding the right of way and the perpendicular parking to the right of way, is totally conforming with the zoning and bulk requirements of the ordinance. The project also, the bulk of the services will be provided through a homeowners association. And any approval the board may grant should have those documents available for review and approval. They should specifically detail all the responsibilities of the homeowners association. There isn't the extensive amount of fill that's required for the project as evident in the north portion. And we've reviewed the post-apography and really take no exception with the onsite grading that's proposed. Mr. Tuvall indicated that the applicant did secure all his DEP permits prior to submission. And they took the lead as far as the drainage design of the project, and they approved it. So what the drainage system as presented meets all DEP regulations. I'd also note that it appears that the design also incorporates the new regulations that recently came on, I believe, March second. They came online, and a lot of the features that are proposed with this current development are in compliance with those regulations, specifically undisturbed areas and green infrastructure. We briefly talked about the Prosper Town Road. There were some discussions as far as do we want to keep the traveled way where it is or move it into the Prosper Town Road right of way. The applicant has agreed to move the trail within the right of way where it should be. There will need to be some additional detailing as far as, you know, the improvements to that right of way, the crossing of the internal roadway, any buffering that might be appropriate. And also, we will need to see some drainage calculations that take into account the modification of that. Originally, the drainage basin did use a portion of the Prosper Town Road right of way. And if we're going to keep the right of way in its existing location, then there will have to be some tests or some drainage calculations revisions. And would also be curious if DEP would want to look at those revisions as well. The applicants proposing all required road improvements to the county road in front of the site. We would request as far as the phasing goes, right now, the phasing basically is just lines on a drawing that show where the different phases are. And I think it would be probably appropriate to have a little bit more detail as far as the section limits with a primary goal of assuring that clear cutting doesn't occur. We have no really issue with cutting in the roadways, but really see no need to clear cut the project. And it should be more of a selective clearing endeavor. And I think the applicant could fine tune the phasing plans a little bit to achieve that goal. All outside agency permits, of course, will be required. The applicant has provided the bulk of them. As the applicant indicated, the environmental commission has indicated no objection to the project. And lastly, there was some testimony or feeling that there may not have been enough recreational facilities that were incorporated into the project. And the applicant has indicated or has added a tot lot and the beach volleyball and also some additional pedestrian benches throughout the site. So I think really with one issue as far as the right of way and the variance relief, which may or may not be required, that's all from an engineering perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our office had issued two reports for this application. First was on July thirty-first of two thousand and nineteen, and the second was August tenth of two thousand and twenty. I'd like to spend a couple of minutes to go through those reports and the waivers and variances that were brought forth in those reports so the board has an understanding of what they're going to be deciding. The original July thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen report, which was for plans that were revised through January thirty-first of two thousand and nineteen, we noted that there was an apparent waiver for lighting. The section for lighting was two forty-four dash fifty-one point two I one. And there were apparent variances for the parking area setback from the road or drive aisle, which is all these are in two forty-four fifty-one point two. This one is K two A. There was an apparent variance for K two B, which was the parking area setback from the curb from E nine F, which was the multifamily setback from a parking area. From E nine G one, which was a multifamily building dimension between sidewalls. And from C six, which dealt with signs. And signs in the MF AH eight zone are permitted as accessory uses. And the ordinance says that they're subject to the provisions of two forty-four two oh seven, which is the Jackson sign ordinance. And there were four apparent sign variances. Two forty-four two oh seven B seventeen, maximum sign area for a development sign. From B seventeen, for the maximum number of permitted signs for development signs. For B four A, maximum sign area for a directional sign. And for B four B, which was the minimum setback for a directional sign. Subsequent to that report, there were plans submitted that were revised through July fourteenth of two thousand and twenty, which I believe are the current plans before the board. So on August tenth, two thousand and twenty, we issued another report which noted still the apparent waiver for lighting. Which the applicant has indicated during testimony they would comply with. So there's no waiver relief being requested. And compliance with that standard, and the standard in the ordinance is two forty-four fifty-one point two I one would be a condition of any approval. We note that all of the sign variance relief has been removed from the plans, those last four variances. The applicant also indicated they would comply with the parking area setback from the curb requirement, which was two forty-four fifty-one point two K two B. He've indicated that no variance relief will be requested, and so compliance with that particular standard would be a condition of the approval. The applicant also indicated they would comply with the multifamily setback from parking area requirement, which is again, two forty-four fifty-one point two E nine F. So no waiver relief is, no relief is required. And compliance with that standard would be a condition of the approval. They also indicated they would comply with the multifamily building sidewall to sidewall distance requirement, which was two forty-four fifty-one point two E nine G one. And so no variance relief is required. And compliance with that standard would be a condition of any approval. That leaves us with the one that we've discussed at length, two forty-four fifty-one point two K two A, which reads that off-street parking areas shall be set back at least twenty-five feet from any road or drive aisle if no parking is provided in front of a multifamily building. During the application, there was a report from Mr. Rayn Camp, I believe it was dated April seventh of two thousand and twenty. Mr. Rayn Camp testified with regards to that report, but for ease of the record, Mr. Rayn Camp made several points on this matter. The first was he indicated that the current configuration of parking was originally depicted on the concept plans during the writing of the MF AH eight zone ordinance. He also indicated that these parking spaces that are in question are not what are being referred to as off-street. Now, unfortunately, the Jackson Township Code does not differentiate between on-street and off-street parking spaces. Now, this is simply an inconsistency which was not reconciled during the drafting of the ordinance for this site. So this ordinance, chapter two forty-four fifty-one point two, the MF AH eight zone, talks about off-street parking. However, the ordinance does not specifically define it. The last point that Mr. Rayn Camp made in his report and in his testimony was that the New Jersey Residential Site Improvement Standards, or RSIS, does in fact address this type of parking configuration as an on-street parking situation. parking configuration as an on-street parking situation, and that the applicant has agreed that a de minimis exception from RSIS is required. Now, at the end of this ordinance section regarding parking, 244-51.2K, last part of that in 2C, it reads that de minimis exceptions to these requirements may be granted by the planning board to avoid cost generative improvements during the approval process. So the board needs to decide if this parking layout requires either variance relief, which I think would be C2 variance relief in the Jackson Township Code, or if it requires a de minimis exception from the New Jersey Residential Site Improvement Standards. Mr. Rangkamp's testimony indicated that whether it was for the variance or for the de minimis exception, that the applicant had indicated during their proofs that they would agree that the Homeowners Association would maintain all of the parking space areas. So that requirement would not inure to the governing body. I'm going to stop there because that's where the waivers and variances end. I can tell you that during the hearings and during the summaries by the applicants, by the two attorneys, and from Mr. Cle, I've made sort of a cheat sheet of things that were agreed to. And if in fact we get to that point, I'm happy to share my list of things we've talked about as reasonable conditions of approval. But I'll leave it to either the chairman or Mr. Gertner if we want to go there, if we want to have our deliberations first. Or I can just give you the list that I've come up with so far.
Go ahead.
And again, if I go too fast or if I skip something, please feel free to jump in. The applicant has agreed to compliance with the board's professionals' reports. They've agreed to the receipt of all required outside agency approvals, compliance with all affordable housing obligations, the need for a developer's agreement, the need for homeowners association documents. To the best of my recollection, there would be two sets of homeowners associations, one for the entire tract, that would take care of the roads, the stormwater management, the open space, and one for the multifamily area. So two homeowners associations. There needs to be a sectionalization and phasing plan, which specifically discusses the timing of improvements. There needs to be revisions to the plans to discuss site amenities. I believe that included a dumpster at the clubhouse. The applicant had agreed to additional passive and active recreation facilities. There was discussion regarding the Prosper Town right-of-way improvements. There was discussion regarding the need for an off-site sewer easement realignment. There was an agreement regarding shade trees along West Veterans Highway. There was a discussion regarding emergency access to West Veterans Highway. And I believe one of the board members asked that there be some coordination with the Board of Education regarding the school bus stop locations within the site. And that's what I have so far, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Gertner, anything you'd like to add?
Just briefly, Mr. Chairman, following up on this, and again, in an attempt to perhaps give the board an overall rubric for its deliberation and discussion, as has been indicated, this particular zone and this particular zoning ordinance was developed based upon a settlement between the municipality and a former developer with regard to the provision of affordable housing. This site is part of the affordable housing plan for the municipality to meet its fair share obligations through 2025. I believe respectfully, your board professionals have outlined generally and with some specificity possible conditions of approval. I would just add that in terms of, for instance, in terms of environmental issues, that phasing plan, as Mr. Cle indicated, just to highlight that, phasing plan would address some of the clear-cutting issues that the board has raised to try to protect the environment, additional landscaping plans, some additional renderings for the clubhouse and its timing for development, though that would be part of the EQA submission as well. And I would say that as to the, certainly available for any other questions, but as to the, what I perceive respectfully to be a technical question regarding the need for a variance or a de minimis exception on that parking, first of all, as Mr. Peters indicated, setback issue meets RSIS standards. The developer has agreed that its care and maintenance would be addressed through a developer's agreement and easements with the municipality. So in essence, broadly speaking, that's an outside, that would be township in this instance. It would act as an outside agency approval. Noted further, I believe even Mr. Gazarovski admitted this as part of his closing, the fact that this parking is provided, actually provides the site with some additional parking has always been a concern of the board, the fact that there is in fact additional parking raised. I would just ask also, as part of your deliberation, I heard Mr. Traval indicate some concern over some perceived lack of forthrightness regarding coupon. I don't find that to be relevant in your deliberations. I think what is relevant is what is before you, what evidence and testimony has been presented, what submissions have been presented, and what facts are before you. Remember, and I respectfully remind you, that you are, while you are charged pursuant to statute with ensuring the health and safety of the residents of the municipality and providing reasonable non-cost generative conditions of approval and an affordable housing obligation, you sit here as a quasi-judicial board in this instance. You're applying the law to the facts and evidence as presented. So as you deliberate and ask questions of each other, your professionals, please use that as a overall guideline.
Thank you. Board members, I saw your hand first. Ms. Campbell.
Mr. Peters, since Mr. Gazarovski raised an issue of safety, I wonder if you can explain how safety is compromised by backing out of a perpendicular parking space. How is that any different from backing out of one's driveway?
I don't believe that RSIS would agree with Mr. Gazarovski's point respectfully. Parking arrangement with the either 24 or 30-foot wide aisles with the either 18 or 20-foot perpendicular parking spaces are in fact permitted and recommended in the New Jersey RSIS manual. Fact that there's a line that runs through it, a municipal right-of-way, which is utilized to set distance that the buildings need to be set back in the areas where there isn't perpendicular parking. The idea that that line runs through there requires a de minimis exception from the RSIS standards. But that pot or that idea of having an aisle and perpendicular parking off of it is set forth in RSIS.
Mr. Riker.
I just wanted to put this on the record for the Environmental Commission as the chairman. Mr. Traval, just as a clarification, in speaking solely regarding the South, yes, you are correct. We did have a hearing on the 15th. Yes, there was a letter of no concern. Further clarification, we have not addressed at the Environmental Commission due to litigation, the North. So I just wanted to put that on the record going forward, that looking back at this when it all comes around, that that process still has to continue for the North. But he is correct on the South. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Comments? Questions? Discussion?
Tell you what I'm thinking is, I'm thinking that that here is a conforming use that we all took an oath to abide by the New Jersey laws of, and obligated...
Mr. Chairman, is it possible to speak into a microphone, sir?
Sorry.
That was the court reporter.
That was the court reporter. So continuing, you know, we took an oath to abide by the laws of New Jersey's land use, and what we see is a pretty much conforming application that still needs a number of approvals, if I'm not mistaken, from outside agencies. So as far as I'm concerned, and I don't know if I'm speaking for the whole board or just myself, on the surface, it appears that they've met their obligation to this planning board, this board. However, they still have some bridges to cross with other agencies within New Jersey to get their approval. Am I...
I believe that's a fair assessment, Mr. Chairman, that between continuing to process outside agency approvals along with further details, for instance, on the phasing plan, the signage plan along Prosper Town Road and the like, that there's enough, there's sufficient protections for the people of Jackson Township with regard, at least to the South application, that the board could certainly approve this particular application. For instance, as well, I know there's been some concern, I just, the board should recall that this particular site, the South site, borders on a county road. Mr. Gazarovski correctly raises the concern that the board has raised with regard to the connector road and the North application. So as part of a developer's agreement, I am sure that the applicant and the municipality will focus on access to this site as to as much as is practicable utilizing the county road. I would just add furthermore, Mr. Chairman, that along those same lines, that the application in and of itself with regard to the parking, Mr. Peters raised this, I think this is important. I think for clarity's purposes, I, as the board's attorney, my recommendation would be to address the de minimis exception as a C2 variance and not as a waiver. I think that's important, although each application does stand on its own merits and this whole idea of precedent. I think it's important for the board respectfully to speak as a voice and to, with regard to addressing that, that particular issue as a variance. And the idea, for instance, that the C2 variance, the criterion for the C2 variance has been that, I think the record, I hear no objection from the board or our professionals, so I think the record is replete with a basis to support the C2 variance, not the least of which is our own legislative history with regard to that. And I read again what Mr. Peters read, Section K of the parking, 2C. The ordinance itself, its legislative history recognized, quote, "de minimis exceptions to these requirements may be granted by the planning board to avoid cost generative improvements during the approval process."
Okay. Anyone have anything further to add? Any questions or comments?
I do have a question, if I may. There were some things, concessions, you've agreed to and whatnot. Who enforces that to make sure that they comply?
So I'll start, and then I would turn over really to Mr. Cle and Mr. Peters as well. So that's ultimately respectfully my responsibility to articulate on behalf of the board a resolution that sets forth those concessions and those issues with the assistance of our professionals as well. Then it becomes an enforcement mechanism of the municipality. In this particular application for the board's protection, and I think the public's as well, there's a second bite at that apple, to use the vernacular term, because a developer's agreement will also address some of these concessions and issues. For instance, as Mr. Cle and Mr. Peters both indicated, and again, I'm just laying out these, the lists. So we talked about in general, and it's my job to then articulate this as the Scribner with assistance, the idea of the fact that Prosper Town Road, as an example, will now be in that right of way and improve, but also improve where its traditional historic use to ensure that there's proper signage and protection of the historic access through, excuse me, through Prosper Town Road to Colliers Mills, as an example. Another concession that the board extracted, and Mr. Traval indicated, and it's true, the board went back and forth because the board didn't, as a collective entity, didn't feel that the 15-foot parking driveways in some of the townhouses was sufficient. So ultimately, after some back and forth, the applicant conceded that's at least to go to 17 feet. That's another example that would be part of a resolution. So it's our job, that, those are two examples, but it's our job, and I say mine ultimately, but with the assistance of our board professionals with review of the board itself, to make sure that the resolution is sufficiently clear and concise, but also comprehensive to address these consensuses, so our zoning officer and the other building inspectors and the like, enforcement arm in the municipality have a clear path to how to enforce these questions. Sorry to be long-winded, but I think...
It's okay. This has been going on for a long time. It's okay.
For a lawyer, anyway, yes.
All right. Okay, does anybody else have any questions or comments or concerns, anything need to be explored or explained? I hope, you know, we've been listening to this application for quite some time, late at night. I appreciate all of your hard work and staying up and listening to all of this testimony. I really do. And with no other comments or questions, you, as a board, I'd like to get a feel, are you guys ready to make a decision, or do you want to deliberate, some time to deliberate, review anything on your own? Or are you guys ready to go? Ready? Yes, sir.
I mean, myself, I'm ready to go. Like, as you would I pointed out, we took an oath, and it precludes us, whether we like it or we don't, can't enter into our decision-making, because it meet the law. And that's the way we took the oath to do. Okay, our own personal feelings can't enter into it. It's, you have to be dispassionate when you do it. I'm prepared to do that now.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, anyone care to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the application with all the stipulations and agreements that the applicant did make.
agreements that the, that the applicant did make. It was pointed out by our professionals in our, in our legal advice, but it should be in that resolution. So based on that, I make the motion to approve.
Thank you. You have a second. Okay. Progress. Let's, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dolan?
Reluctantly, because I don't like where it's at, and I don't like its impact, especially upon the residents, but it abides by the law, and that's what we swore to do. So, yes.
Dr. Campbell?
I also commiserate with our residents, especially those in the Perrineville Prosper Town Road area, who enjoy the rural nature of that environment. However, given the lack of variance requests, the ongoing processes regarding the county environmental reviews, and our obligations, I vote yes.
I concur with the fellow people who spoke before, but I will note that as much of a challenge as it seems to be environmentally, I would encourage the public to take note, stand up, and start to attend the Environmental Commission meetings. There was no public whatsoever in the attendance of the Environmental Commission meeting for this portion of the project. That is your time, that is your moment, that is when the people need to speak. And unfortunately, there was no one there other than members of the commission to assist. That being said, I have looked at this. It is the best possible outcome with months of work, months of nights in testimony, and I vote yes.
Mr. Jeswicki?
I agree with my colleagues on this and reluctantly vote yes as well.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Haring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
I believe my, my fellow board members have expressed their views, and I, I really can't add to anything that they've said. I also vote yes. Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're done.